I think Steve caught you without you knowing it. Steve actually matched you without you knowing it.
Did he? But he did.
Can you do a resolution for both of them?
All right, y'all.
Yeah.
Welcome to our Rankin County Board of Supervisors September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen meeting. We're gonna call this meeting to order. I asked Craig, would you lead us in prayer?
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to. Father, your goodness to us, your mercy toward us, your grace that you provide to us, Lord, those are things that oftentimes we find ourselves taking for granted. Lord, I pray that you would forgive us for that. Thank you, Lord, and we acknowledge your presence here with us. We thank you, Lord, for your power. I pray, Father, that you would give these men the wisdom they need today so that they can make good and wise decisions that benefit the entire county. Lord, I thank you for public servants who are willing to step up from law enforcement to our first responders. Father, thank you for the gift that they are to help in keep our communities safe. Father, thank you that these men have been willing to sacrifice. Father, they have stepped up and accepted the challenge to govern, to govern responsibly. Father, I pray that you would just help them and bless them as they do their work today. May it be for your glory, in Christ's name.
Amen. Before we get into our public comments, I'd like to thank a few people that are here just, I guess, supporting Rankin County. Judge Odom, thank you, sir, Chancery Judge, former judge and prosecutor, John Shirley. We have a supervisor here that's not even from Rankin County. I think he's in here spying on us to see how we do it so well. Brian Kenny, thank you for coming. And Craig Michelle will be up later. Thank y'all for coming and helping us try to get everything that we can right in Rankin County. All right, let's go down, write down on our public comments. Ms. Kendra Wright with U.S. Census. Hi, AJ.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having me. Happy Monday to you. I am Kendra Wright, Partnership Specialist with the Mississippi team representing the Census Bureau, and we are so happy today to have your consideration of a resolution recognizing the 2020 census. October first marks six months from our April first, 2020 census day. And of course, our goal is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. Also, thank you so much for your recommendations as we put together Rankin County's Complete Count Committee. We have some of those members with us here today. And if they would please stand.
If Ms. Wright will allow me, I will give you guys the names of the folks who have, at this point, they graciously volunteered. I told each of them, they may not know exactly what they volunteer for, but we're gonna make sure that they get all the information that they need so that they understand what we're doing here. Mr. Ira Singleton, raise your hand, thank you. Mr. Ira. Mr. Silvanis Johnson.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you. Ms. Ellen Morgan. Ellen. And then Scott Crowe. I still call him T. We appreciate these folks right here.
Hey, Craig. We want a picture.
Absolutely.
With the census and those people lined up here.
Yeah, why don't you guys come forward? And I will go ahead, Ms. Wright, if you'll get front and center right up to your fore.
Let me see what order we want. We want to be in the order that we are on this page. From left to right, Ira, Silvanis, Ellen, Scott.
Thank y'all. Guys, the other action that we need you to take this morning is to adopt a resolution on behalf of the board supervisors that indicates this board's strong position in supporting our 2020 census and making sure that all of the citizens of Rankin County are aware that the census is being taken, that effectively what this means is an open door of opportunity for our county to be counted where it matters most. And it is so critical and important to federal funding, to being properly represented in all bodies of legislative activity from the local, state, and federal level. It is absolutely critical that that count be complete and adequate and accurate. And so, we want to get the word out, and we really appreciate our friends, especially in the media, who help us to promote the fact that we are encouraging all of our people to participate in the events and the initiatives that will raise awareness about the census. So, any activity that we can do, and you're adopting this resolution today on behalf of the board of supervisors, and I would like for the board to consider adopting that at this time.
Do we have a motion?
So, move.
All right, Jared makes a motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, before we leave that discussion, I want to remind the board as well that we will have a standing board agenda item for each of our statutory meetings, the first Monday of every month, beginning in January, to report, both either from the committee or Ms. Wright or any other individuals who are affiliated with the census, to give you guys an update on where we are, what we're doing, and where we may need some help.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Michelle. Craig. It's with MEMA.
Yes, sir.
Come on forward.
Good morning, gentlemen. This morning, we had Mr. Bob Busek, who is IT Director with MEMA, and also the Director, Colonel Greg Michelle, who is here with us as well. A couple of weeks ago, Lance Cooper came to you with a request from MEMA about some GIS data. And Lance and I talked about it. We were kind of unclear about what is this for? And we've had a couple of emails back and forth through MEMA. And Director Michelle sent a, the last email that he sent out was a pretty good explanation of what it is that they're trying to do and why they're trying to do it. And I replied back to that email. He promptly called me back, probably within about five minutes, and we had about an hour-long discussion about this data and other facets of this program that they have entered into. So, as you well know, communication is usually the biggest breakdown in anything that we do. Now, we've got Director Michelle here who can actually explain to you what it is that they're trying to do on a statewide level and how it's going to help Rankin County in its endeavors in the future. So, Director Michelle.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you all very much for letting me come in and speak with y'all today about this. To give you a little background, I'll try to be real quick because I know you've got an agenda here, and I don't want to take up much of your time. When I first came into this job, June of eighteen, one of the things that I committed to the governor and to the state of Mississippi is that we would do everything in the world we could to ensure that we captured every dime of any disaster assistance grants that we could get. One of the problems that we initially, or I initially identified, was that we had, I say I, the team at MEMA identified, was that our Collector App, which is the application that we use for going out and collecting damages in your communities when you have a storm or a natural disaster or anything of that matter that would cause damage to your county or your municipality, is we have to collect that data. And for a public assistance grant, there is a monetary threshold that has to be met in order to meet, both on the county level, and then the state has a monetary threshold has to be met before we can submit to the president for a PA disaster declaration. In the case of the state, it's four and a half million dollars, and then each county, based on population, has a different threshold to be met. The Collector App, in my opinion, is very clunky. It doesn't do a good job, and oftentimes, we are dependent upon the county engineers or members of the board supervisor, whoever is responsible for validating the estimated damage estimates for public infrastructure, sometimes can be delayed. And that's no hit on anybody, it just, it is what it is. So, we started looking at this Crisis Track tool about a year ago, a little over a year ago. It was actually brought to us by Mike Chaney's team at the Commission of Insurance of something we needed to look at. We've been looking at this over a year. We looked at it very long and hard, and we went into, entered into a partnership with the Mississippi Insurance Commission or Mississippi Insurance Department on this tool. They want to use it for access to certain tax record data on the insurance side of the house, and then we're gonna use it for our new damage assessment tool. Now, why am I here today? What is the confusion about? Obviously, you, like other counties, you are either paying for a third, a second party or a third party to come in and collect that data for you, and then you're paying for it. Or in the case in Rankin County, you actually got a very, you've got a GIS person that's heading that up, and there's money, though, that you put into that. I believe that what started this is when Crisis Track, not MEMA rep, a Crisis Track rep reached out to the GIS department here several weeks ago, maybe even over a month ago, asking for data. I can certainly understand why that would have been an issue when you've got data that you've invested in, and now a vendor is asking you to get that information. That was a miscommunication. It should have been handled differently. We worked through that on MEMA. Someone from my agency should have reached out and probably verbalized that a little bit better. So, what we are doing is, we certainly don't want to go back out and, as a state, try to reinvent the wheel and going out and recollecting data that already exists. So, what we are asking is, is that whatever type of arrangement we can work out, and we know that that's gonna be different with all the communities, because there are a lot of communities that are paying for this to be done outside. Some communities don't have it at all. In those cases, we're gonna have to recreate that data from scratch. But what we're asking, and I'm not asking for any formal vote or anything today, I'm asking just for your consideration and understanding that we're gonna be asking for that tax data, and that data will not be owned by the vendor. That data will be proprietary for you and for the state of Mississippi. That data will be entered into the Crisis Track application. And when we purchase that, we purchase that so that every county, the eighty-two counties and the Mississippi band of Choctaw Indians will actually have that tool to be utilized. And each county can build upon that to inventory man-hours, work hours, equipment, and everything else that's involved. It's a tool that Mike will actually have here in Rankin County. He can build upon that, and actually, I talked to Bob this morning, and we can actually help and move out to expedite to get that tool stood up for you. But every county, we purchased it for the state of Mississippi, so every county have access to it. We will use it at the state level for, to expedite damage assessments in the event you have another tornado or flood or whatever the case may be. We can go in. The tax record data will already be loaded, so those buildings, those infrastructures, those roads, utilities, estimates will already be there. Same will be done for individual assistance or damage to homes, where we can go in and make an IA declaration. The tax record data will already be there, and it will help expedite our request to the president for those declarations. So, that's why we ask for the data. That's what the data will be used for. And again, we should have reached out to Rankin County ourselves. The vendor got a little bit ahead of us, and that's probably my fault because I'm wanting to get that information loaded as quickly as we can so we can be ready for the next disasters, so we can use it more efficiently next time. That's a general overview. I'm happy to answer any questions from anyone on what we're doing, if you'd like, at this point.
No, but I would like to make one comment, Director Michelle. And again, I appreciate your time and appreciate you coming out to Rankin County to see us. I also appreciate the relationship you've got with Mike Word over at UOC. I know when we had the tornadoes in Puckett, not only was our UOC on the ground there, you were there as well on firsthand. So, I appreciate you taking the time and sharing your resources and availability of your people at MEMA to Rankin County. So, I just want to thank you for that same stuff.
My pleasure. I appreciate y'all's support to me.
Is there a fee from this vendor for our county to be able to participate down the road?
As far as charging Rankin County to use this?
Yes.
No. There's no fee to Rankin County, and that's one of the things, that's why we labored long and hard, that's why we went out and partnered with Mississippi Insurance Department. We are gonna front the cost for this tool, much the same way we did with Collector App. But the Collector App is just, it's an old, it's old technology. It's clunky. Collector App is new. It's got a lot more opportunities. And what it's gonna give Mike, vis-à-vis Rankin County, is access to a much broader app, where he can actually inventory and track the assets. Rankin County's got a lot of resources with regard to high-water vehicles and stuff like that. He can actually track those vehicles in there. When we do SMAC agreements from one county to another for support, he can actually track the man-hours that go into that. But no, there will be no cost to Rankin County for that. We're gonna cover that at the state level.
Mr. Gaines, about. About a year, a year and a half ago, I was at the Partners in Preparedness Conference down on the coast, and that's when my first introduction to this Crisis Track. I looked at it, came back and did a little bit of research, then went back for the second one, and spoke pretty extensively to, I believe it was Mona, with Crisis Track down there. And I truly did want to bring this to Rankin County. But I'm gonna just be honest with you, it was cost prohibitive in my mind for our budget. It is an extremely expensive program, and with as many things as I've brought to you over the last eighteen months over software, I didn't want to bring another huge, big-ticket item to you. And I guess I've said all that to say this, what this is gonna allow us to do, should you so choose to enter into the agreement with MEMA, is basically, we're gonna get this software package at no cost to Rankin County. To simplify, it's got a ton of what I'm gonna call formology. We have so many forms that we have to fill out if we believe that we're gonna get a declaration, because if we don't have it, we can't go back and recreate it. It's gonna be audited by FEMA when they come down, should there be one. In about sixteen days, that we were actually boots on the ground on the tornadoes that were on Highway forty-three, I had eighty-nine pages. In fourteen days, I had eighty-nine pages of just formology. Mr. Harrison back here, I'm gonna venture to say was probably somewhere in the neighborhood of five to six hundred pages deep on just the debris removed. It is a ton of information. When you go to start, you gotta log everything. Fuel, trucks, man-hours, the whole nine yards, and all this information, from what I understand and talking to Mona, is already entered in there, and it's basically, fill out a couple of boxes, and you're ready to go. And it's documented, and it's just like FEMA wants it, so.
If this program would have been in effect in April, would we have been able to recoup any of our monies?
Well, no. We know we did our part. Would, is this gonna help the rest of the counties do anything?
The other counties that did not take the time to fill out the paperwork?
Yes, that's a good question, and I, and Mike could kind of tell me to be prepared for that. It would certainly help, because I will tell you that some of the other counties are not resourced like you are. And again, I go back to the point, I struggle with it. I struggle with getting, you know, when we had the flash flooding back in December, which was the first event we had back in twenty eighteen, I went out and spent a lot of time in a lot of counties, and there were counties I had, we didn't have supervisors even come out and be present. EMAs were doing everything by themselves. So, back to your question, sir, would it have helped? I believe that it would have. I make no guarantees about it, because again, every county is responsible for collecting the data and getting it to us, and we try to work extensively, help them and prompt them to get it done. What happened with the tornado event that you all had is you just got caught in a situation where we didn't have enough money to meet the state's threshold, and that's a constant struggle. This tool will certainly help that. It will certainly help Rankin County, but those counties are not resourced like you are. It'll give them access to tools to be able to more readily collect the data, because the tax record data will already be there.
I don't know if we were necessarily resourcing it better than any other county, because it was our UOC director and our road manager that was spending all those hours putting that information together, so.
When I mean resource, I mean you actually got people out there doing the work and doing the job, rolling up the sleeves. There's not as much energy across the board in every county, let's just put it that way. I may have misspoke on that, I'm sorry.
And then you gotta document it.
Yeah, right.
That's the key thing. I mean, I think they spent work and time out there, but if they don't document their hours and log the forms the correct way, then it's like nothing happened.
And it's certainly frustrating, I understand, to get it. I mean, I was on the phone with Mike a lot. We had similar issue in Pearl River County, where counties are, you know, they're right there, and we're that close, and we just can't get the money there. I don't like that. I don't like the way that it is, but unfortunately, I don't make the rules with it. I have to deal with what we have. And then the whole IA declaration on your individual side, it's a whole nother ballgame, and it doesn't, there's not even a formula there for that. And I'm struggling with that right now with the Backwater Declaration I've been working on since February. So, I understand your frustrations, I certainly do.
I guess there's gonna be some form in place, some contracts with the software company? Make sure they don't share our data?
We will, yes, sir, and we will ask basically, instead of, not really necessarily a contract on our part, we just ask for a memorandum of understanding on what we're gonna do and the data that's sharing. We have already had the discussion with Crisis Track. That data will not be shared with anyone else. As a matter of fact, we, in some cases, you get in with software companies, if you're not careful with your contracts, you end up putting a lot of time and effort to data that the software company owns. We are proprietary to everything that gets collected. If we decide to break this agreement with Crisis Track next, at the end of this first year, and they walk away, they walk away, they walk away with nothing. We keep the data that we collect.
That's great.
Sir.
Well, we don't have to make a decision right here. I'd like to gather some more stuff and let Craig give us some advice, and I'm sure we can do something in the very short future, but.
Sure. I just wanted to make sure that I came and clarified any misconceptions that you may have, and I certainly want y'all to talk about it, do whatever you're comfortable with, and then, you know, we'll get back together, and whatever we need to do to make it happen, we will. It's important, not only in Rankin County, but to the state, that we get this fielded.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank y'all again for letting me come.
I want to clarify, I want, not to you, this is, so it's not misinterpreted, Jake was saying how Mike and Word, Mike Harrison, Word, were the ones that did all the work, and they were working twenty-four hours a day for at least four or five days. But the whole Sheriff's Department inmates, our road department, all of Lance and, I mean, from our IT to everybody in this county that could help was helping. And I don't want any way for it to leave here and somebody feel like they were not appreciated. They made it come together, and it came together very well. Thank y'all. All right.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
Let's see. Mr. Shirley's next on our list. You can stay where you at, Mr. Shirley.
She's giving you a handout, and I'm gonna wait just a second so you can get a look at it. It's two-sided, I'm trying to save paper. But what I'm gonna start is on the page that says John Shirley with my, it's underlined, and I'm not gonna read it to you, because I know you can read. I'm just gonna go over it briefly. Obviously, I'm gonna be the county prosecutor starting January the second of twenty-second, twenty twenty, and my goal is to do whatever is best for the county, and my goal is to hold criminals accountable and to reduce crime. Our current county prosecutor has two assistant county prosecutors and one administrative assistant. I'm going, can everybody hear me? I'm going to handle the same responsibilities he had, plus new responsibilities, and I ask that the budget for the, for when I take office be the same as when he had it. If you notice, Justice Court is, we're gonna have court every day except Wednesdays, and you don't need to look at it now, but on the backside of that page, I've actually detailed the schedules for the court. County court, I'm gonna be doing appeals on Wednesdays and an extra day. There are actually, the current prosecutor had to set aside two days. At this point, it doesn't look like I'm gonna have an extra day to be able to do that without help. And I also have to have hearings if a law enforcement officer or a teacher is accused of committing a crime while they're on duty. The law says that the county prosecutor has to hold those hearings, and those hearings will be held in county court. There's also some new responsibilities. The legislature enacted Criminal Justice Reform Act, House Bill thirteen fifty-two. That recognizes that defendants need drug addiction assistance and recognizes that defendants need mental health issues assistance. And if you've noticed, Judge Carlton Reeves with the federal court has indicated that Mississippi is not doing what they're supposed to be doing as far as the mental health system, and so I anticipate he's gonna be making some changes. I'll also be reviewing every criminal affidavit before it's given to a judge, because there's no need for the judge to look at it if it's one that I think I wouldn't prosecute. And if I have an issue with any of those, I'm gonna talk to the people that filed the affidavit, so I can clear up those issues. And I'm gonna look at the domestic violence defendants, because what I'm gonna do is ask on a lot of these cases that the judge give them jail time, but maybe suspend some of the jail time subject to certain conditions. And so, what I anticipate doing is meeting with those defendants to see if they're doing what the judge ordered them to do. The same goes for restitution, if they're ordered to pay restitution, or if they're ordered to pay, do community service. Right now, the only people that have allowed us to do community service in the past has been the city of Florence and the Reservoir Fire Department. And the Reservoir Fire Department indicates that he will still allow that to happen. I would hope we could get some more community service work available. I'm gonna be meeting with defendants on mental health issues, meeting with defendants on drug addiction issues, and some of them, the judge will order that they get a Regenate assessment, and I'll be meeting with those folks. So, I'm asking that the budget be the same, but the newest thing that I want to talk to you about is community development, and that starts the top of that second, the back page there. Right now, in community development, you've got ordinance violations, and the community development tries to work with these alleged violators. Some of them cooperate, and some of them don't cooperate. If it's not resolved, then community development brings the ordinance violation to the attention of the board, and the board holds hearings. And I understand there may be some that are set for today, or you're gonna be setting a public hearing on those. I suggest that when the violator does not cooperate with community development, that I get involved right then rather than waiting on something to go to Justice Court, because if they get communication from me that says, listen, we want to work with you, you could go to jail, you could get jail time, you could get a fine, you could be arrested, and we don't want any of that to happen. All we want to do is to straighten out your property. I think if they get communication with the prosecutor, they'll start taking it seriously. And again, these are the people that are not cooperating with community development. I understand that some do cooperate. So, my goal right there is to reduce the ordinance violations for the board, and I'm asking that the county prosecutors pay, the assistant county prosecutors pay, and the administrative assistants pays remain the same. I just got a copy of the proposed budget, and I'm gonna, if I read it correctly, and somebody correct me if I read it wrong, it looked like you cut the county prosecutors' pay in half, and you cut the county assistant prosecutors' pay in half. Of course, I'm not sure whether that's for one assistant or whether that's for two assistants. And then you did a substantial cut on the administrative assistant. I'm not as concerned about the administrative assistant, because I'll probably be doing a lot of the paperwork myself anyway. But the, if you hire an assistant DA, they are paid not by how long they've been in the job, they're paid by how much legal service they have. I have thirty-one years of legal service, the same as the current prosecutor. And obviously, nineteen years of that as a judge, and before that, I was the county prosecutor. And so, I'm asking that you take all that into consideration and adjust the pay, and I would be glad to try to answer any questions.
This is public comment, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shirley, and we will take this on advisement. That you do to look at and study, and I thank you for bringing this.
Thank you.
All righty. Let's go to O Business.
Make a base approval, August twenty-ninth, September thirty minutes.
Second.
Bob makes a motion. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Consent.
I have one question on consent. Just the, the first part here, where the receipts for, from the different fire departments, does this mean, is this all we're needing, or are we lacking some from some other fire department?
No, this is not all the fire departments.
I know.
So, we, as they come in, we keep them and we put them on the desk.
Are we having any problems or something?
No, this is simply that they have to report to us every year.
I know.
And then they get their allocation, but until they turn in the run reports and this, they will not get their.
Well, I knew that, and I knew in the past we'd had some problems sometimes, and if that'd be the case, I need to make some contacts.
From what I understand, there are still several of our fire departments that have not submitted a financial statements, and the last report that I saw that Brett gave me and put on my desk, there were several fire departments that have not done run reports. Some of those folks have not done run reports this year, and they are way, way, way behind. So, obviously, once you guys write the checks out, obviously, those will not be remitted back to the fire departments until such time as they meet your requirements, which is those financial statements sit in and the run reports are.
Timely run reports.
Okay.
Until such time, we obviously won't permit, until they admit your standards.
But you'll be sending them some type of, I guess, a reminder?
We've been giving them for the last sixty days.
Okay, good.
We just had a fire team meeting about two and a half weeks ago and brought it up again.
Okay. All right. Good, good deal. That's, that's the only question I have.
Those men and women, I will tell you this. They, they did a tremendously good job to protect our citizens. And it's tough to, you know, they're already given a tremendous amount of time, and it is a lot of work on the administration.
And they are volunteers.
Absolutely. They don't charge us time, and they do a great, great job.
Okay. I second the motion.
All right. Bob made a motion. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? This is relating to the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes to accept that consent agenda. Mr. Harrison.
Morning.
Request approval, April 22, 2013, to construct fiber optic cable line across Gen Road, being followed by Highway 43 and Central Road.
Have they been doing what they're supposed to be doing?
Oh, Lord. And, and much more.
I know we've put a lot of restrictions on them in the last six months. I say restrictions, a lot of oversight in the last six months. Are they playing like they're supposed to play?
So.
Getting, getting better.
But I'm not, I'm not voting to approve it. I mean, I, I mean, my thing is, I, I want, I want good, a good partnership between the two. But if you're telling me they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing over there, then.
The problem is, I mean, Daniel and I, I mean, we just ain't got time to police them like we need to police them.
Well, we ought not have to police them.
And, and we shouldn't have to police them. That's right. I mean, what they give us and we approve.
There's only one person here making money. That's them.
That's right.
And when I go through a neighborhood, I get a call from half of the people in there. I mean, from one thing to the other.
I do.
And it don't change. It just seems like.
And, and this is.
Can't talk to any of them because they can't speak English.
This is the same situation we've had just run, almost like Sherman burning the way to Atlanta through the reservoir, trying to get this fire.
And I, I have to lean on Craig of how much pressure we can put on.
I know.
Explain, Craig. Eighty, eighty is, but you get ceasefire behind. Come to the same thing behind, so.
So that it's clear of what we're up against in that situation. These are federally governed utilities. These are interstate commerce activities. As much as we understand and feel the pain of what's happening at the local level, at the end of the day, they are governed at the national level, and they have the full weight and force of the US Congress in their favor. And they like to throw around that they are preempted, that the federal law preempts any state or local law as it relates to controlling access to public right-of-way. So this is the battle we always face with these guys. They love to tell us, we can get, as long as we're in the public right-of-way, they like to think, we can just do whatever we want to do. That's not what the law says. We can regulate where in the right-of-way they go. We can also tell them, and I think it bears the point this out, that if you put in the public right-of-way your utilities, and we later need to make an adjustment to that road, you will get those out of the way. I think it bears pointing out that this very applicant has been giving us some trouble as it relates to our Andrew Chapel project. We still have AT&amp;T Utilities in the way on our bridge project, and they can't seem to get real motivated to get out of the way.
Well, then, we need to just stop what we're doing.
I, I would like for the board to consider whether or not a discussion about how quickly they can help us on Andrew Chapel relates to whether or not they go onto Gen Road.
Sounds good. I, just this past week, I had one guy call me. They cut his water line four times in one week. He was without water four nights when he'd get home and had to notify the water association. It'd take them a while to get.
Yes.
Same water line.
Steve, I want to point out a couple of things. That is, that is, that's representative of the difficulties that we face. All of this shows up at the local level. They like to preach to us from Washington.
Right.
And so that makes it very difficult for us, especially from a politics standpoint. The, the other issue that we face there is that sometimes the problem is the AT&amp;T. Most of the time, it's who they hire.
Right.
And they don't do a very good job of hiring. They pay, unfortunately, like we have to a lot of times, they pay the low bidder. And a lot of times, the, those operations are not, they're not the most organized or the most capable. So there's a lot of moving parts to this. I also want to point something else out, too. Our water, our water associations are, they're not big outfits and big operations. And sometimes, they don't know where their utilities are. And that makes it very maddening when locate, can't really locate water utilities. And we've got a lot of that in the ground around the county where 811 comes out, and they can't find it. It doesn't have any of the.
Trace wire.
Tim, help me. You've got the little, the trace wire, whatever. I, I'm afraid that a lot of that predates the use of some of that technology. And so we have a Dickens of a time knowing where everything is. And so sometimes, these breaks, these cuts happen not because it's any person's fault in particular, but as long as they are working with us and trying to do right, then we find a way to work with them. What occurs to me here is that I don't see any evidence that AT&amp;T is trying to work with us on Andrew Chapel.
So.
They are slow-playing us.
To move the part where the bridges are or for the whole project?
It's actually just the bridge part of the project.
Well, it's a man energy. I mean, we've been, me and Jay Keyes, Engineering Service, been trying to get energy to move that line for over a year.
Well, we might as well get them to move all of them, right?
Yeah, but I mean, we've got the right-of-way here.
Don't forget, we gotta clear some right-of-way first before we ask them to move, Jay. And so some of our grubbing projects are moving. But, but the bridge project is, is example, that's Exhibit A of where we needed some help to get that project going, and we didn't get it.
Okay, Mike, what was your request now?
Not to approve.
Request for approval, AT&amp;T Utility Permit to Construct Fiber Cable Line, and that would be Highway 43 and Gen.
I think Mr. Gen made a typo where it said not approved.
Do I have them?
I don't think, I'm not. I'm asking you to table that. Yeah, I mean, I'm just not taking.
I'm saying no.
I'm not taking the action.
Nobody making a motion on it.
All right.
What else you got, Mike? Anything else?
That's all I got, right there.
All right. Okay. Mr. Parker?
We'll show no action on 6A.
Hope you bring better news.
Yes, sir. First item that I have on the agenda is the Crossview Plantation Phase Two, and we're recommending approval of those construction drawings this morning.
Tim, y'all got together and the road is where you want it as far as?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I make a motion. We approve at Crossview.
Second.
All right. I made a motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Second item I have on the agenda is Cedar Creek, and I'm recommending approval of the final plat. And we have a letter of credit in the amount of $74,504.83.
Motion approved. Second.
All right. Bob makes a motion. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right. Thank you. The next item is our Andrew Chapel Road Bridge Replacement Project. We recommend approval of Pay Application Number Six to Joe McGee Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $73,236.45.
I make a motion. We approve.
Second.
Bob seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, I need to add one item.
Yes, sir. Add the deal with Mill Creek.
Yeah, Mill Creek Subdivision Drainage Improvement Project.
No.
Well, that's quick enough. We have Pay Request Number One from Utility Constructors, Inc., in the amount of $66,263.45, and we would recommend approval of that.
Send move.
Motion put on the agenda.
Yes. All right. We have a motion to add this to the agenda by Bob. Do I have a second? Second by Daniel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes to add it to the agenda. Now, do we have a motion to pay this utility work, whatever?
Utility constructor.
Construct, yeah. Do we have a motion?
Send move.
Daniel makes a motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
It's a lawsuit settlement when they're putting new infrastructure back in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I make a motion. We consolidate A3D and set the public hearing for those four locations on October 3rd.
Send.
Fine with me. None of them are in my district. Does that help you some, Craig?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
All right. Go ahead. We have a motion by Bob, second by Jay, to consolidate all of these and set them. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Did all these be set for October 3rd?
Mr. President, item E is the public hearing on the John Chambley Conditional Use Permit at Green Oaks. This is District One. We'll open that public hearing. Mr. Chambley is seeking a conditional use permit to have two dwellings on a one-acre parcel off of Green Oaks. Mr. Chambley wants to build a house for himself and his daughter to live in. He also wants to place a new double-wide manufactured home on the property for his grandson to live in. Mr. Chambley is disabled, and he needs his family to take care of him. The property does not have access to the public road, but he has attained a driveway easement and a wastewater easement for, for one or both dwellings if needed. So that public hearing is open. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the John Chambley Conditional Use Permit. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? If you'll come forward, please. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Joshua Chambley. I'm actually, that's my grandfather that he was just talking about. And currently, my address is, is in Warren County, 10570 Oak Ridge Road, Vicksburg, Mississippi. And I was here to ask permission if that was, well, exactly what he said.
I was, I called for somebody, anyone who was speaking in opposition to this.
Oh.
I think you're in favor, aren't you?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. This is my first time in this.
That's good.
You would not be in opposition, you would be in favor.
Oh, well, then I stood up at the wrong time.
You're good. You're good. We just, we covered some ground quicker than we had to.
Yeah. We'll let, we'll let Josh hold that thought.
Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this matter? State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bennett Boyd. I live at 135 Whisper Lake Boulevard in Madison County. My wife and her brother own the property as we speak now. And the problem would be, first is, there's not enough room. I mean, you're putting a house in a trailer in a, in the backyard of another house. Beautiful piece of property, it would ruin the value. You couldn't sell the property if they wanted to do that. But the main thing is, I think, if y'all tell Mr. Chambley how much the road's gonna cost, this whole discussion would be over with. Because I, what I'm told is he has to actually put a road in for, for, to reach the property. And it's supposed to be a road, not just a gravel driveway. Am I correcting that?
This is, this is a driveway. It's access into property.
So he can just put a gravel path in there?
Whatever it takes to put a driveway in place.
Okay.
It's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to be.
It has to be wide enough.
Wide enough and everything for emergency vehicles and that sort of thing.
Okay. But to put a house in a trailer on a one-acre lot, and if you looked at the property, I don't think there's enough room. And you're jamming too many places in there. And I don't know if you want to put a mobile home in, in your backyard either. I think it's just, I think it's too much.
Did I understand you to say that you and your wife own this property?
No, sir. My wife and her brother own the property.
Where's she?
Where is she? She's at work.
Well, she, she has no, her brother must be his grandfather or something?
No. That's my husband. We change for the in, for the in-laws.
Just state your, state your name.
I'm Cheryl Nance. I live at 1599 Highway 469 South in Florence. My husband is Wayne Nance. He is the other owner of the property, but they're, he's at Port Gibson at work. I, I called to ask if that was. I called.
Adjacent property?
Adjacent property of that would.
The owner.
Not the one acre. No, sir, not the one acre. It's the two and a half acres in a home that's.
I understand.
Right in front. I'm sorry, no.
I misunderstood. I thought you said the property.
We own the property in front of where they want to put the home, house and the mobile home.
Well, this is Jared's district, and I'm sure he's more familiar with it than I am. I totally understand what you're saying. We can have a discussion and.
We got a discussion. I don't know who else, who else wants to.
We have two other people.
Have some comment. If it's a different, if it's the same comment, we'd probably have covered the ground. But if they have something else to add, I'd appreciate hearing it. And if you have something else.
We are in the end process of selling the home and two and a half acres that sits in front of the one acre that Mr. Chambley is proposing, all of this. And he, and rightfully so, he's planning on putting money into the home, and he doesn't necessarily, I mean, depending on what this does, depends on if he wants to purchase the home or not, because he doesn't want a mobile home in his front. But he's here.
Y'all are selling your property.
We're trying to.
I'm just gonna try to solve this. Sell it to them, and they've got another house right next door.
That's what I'm trying to say is, the person that wants to purchase it.
You already have a buyer.
We do. I mean, we're waiting to close, but he doesn't want to purchase it if there's a mobile home.
That family, and there'd be your extra dwellings and.
No, sir, that was, that was offered over a year ago.
So where's the driveway? Who's property of the driveway coming across?
Actually, another adjacent property.
Another one.
Renee, can you speak to that? I, I vaguely recall the layout.
May I say something about the property, about the easement for the driveway? The lady that owns the property, Mr. Chambley's daughter called and asked if she would allow them an easement. She said if they did a, a survey and fair market value, she would. And she never heard anything else from them. But when she found out that it was a mobile home, she does not want to do that. She had an emergency at work and could not be here. I can get that.
Oh, yeah, that would be a, that would be a nonstarter, then.
Exactly. But I, I didn't know that until this morning. She said she'd be happy to write a letter and have it notarized. But that didn't do any good this morning at 8:00.
Well, obviously, they don't have access to the property, then that's problematic.
Well, you also got, I believe, a easement, some type of, for wastewater? Is there an issue there, too?
She got an easement from the person who owns the property behind them for the wastewater easement. And then she got an easement from the property on the east, I think. Her name is Kelly Walker for the driveway.
So is the easement in hand, then?
That's on, on the wastewater.
They had agreed to it, is what my understanding of it. But I don't think that it's been obtained. I mean, she wants to make sure she can be approved before she actually spend any money, you know, on anything or move forward.
If, if where we are at the moment is uncertainty with respect to the access easement, then I don't know that the board needs to take any action. My, my suggestion would be, allow us to table this matter for later consideration. This will give us an opportunity to get up, get to the bottom of whether or not Mr. Chambley is gonna be able to acquire the necessary access easement. Once, once that issue is resolved and clarified, then we can come back before the board with the, and continue with the conditional use. I also want to point out that your, that Ms. Renee has already looked at and begun studying some conditions, since this is a conditional use permit. I do recall that one of the conditions was that this can never be rental property, that, that the units, if the board were to agree to allow the conditional use, these units could only be occupied by Mr. Chambley and his family. Okay?
That's hard to, that's hard to identify. That's hard to, that's hard to identify.
Yes. I understand the difficulties there, but in my opinion, as your legal counsel, until there's more certainty on this access easement, I don't see a need for this to continue.
Well, would we, would it do us, though, since they're here, to go and hear the opinions of the others that may be here, that may give some merit?
Yes, sir.
To, since they are, they came. I think it was like one more back here, too.
Monty Bishop from Florence. I live...
I'll give you address.
Uh, 179 Old Place Road, which, Green Hill Road spurs off of Old Place Road. I'm, I'm opposed to it because, one, this Walker individual hasn't, you know, I guess kind of given a conditional right of way, but how, what is the right of way requirement in Rankin County, width wise?
This is a driveway. We don't regulate driveways. If we were talking about a public road...
Right.
Then we do have specific specifications that go with that. But this is a driveway.
Okay, anyway, we're not, we're not looking for a degradation in the, in the neighborhood, although there is one trailer currently in that neighborhood. There's the understanding that once this individual passes away, the trailer will be gone. It's not deeded in her name, it's, you know, it's family, and they just allowed her to put the trailer in. Once she passes, it'll be gone. So that's my only opposition, that don't particularly want that particular, you know, home style in that, on our, on our road.
Okay, all right. All right.
Is there anyone else to speak in opposition?
Good morning. Erica Jappi, 107 Bethany Road, Lawrence, Mississippi. I am the purchaser of the property, and I just...
Of the adjoining property?
Yeah, no, of the property, the property that we're, we're discussing now.
What's the address of the one you're wanting to buy?
126 Green Oaks.
Now, that's the one that has a house on it?
Yes.
Not the one that we're talking about?
Not with the, the acre of land?
Okay, we're talking about the one with the house on it, okay.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought in Rankin County, if, if you're gonna put a mobile home on a dwelling, you can't do it with less than, it can't be just an acre of land. It has to be more than that. It has to be more than an acre of land.
Not necessarily. I mean, the issue comes in sewer.
Okay.
And they have easement behind it.
That's health department. All right, okay. And, and I also thought that I heard that you can't put two dwellings on, on an acre of land either.
We normally don't.
Two dwellings per lot, yeah. But that's what they're here, that's what they're asking for.
That's what we're here for.
And typically, when it's a family-related issue like you, we have a tendency to look more favorably to a situation like that than we do with just two individuals that are not having that need.
Okay, okay.
I'd say we go anyway, but just that's the kind of issues.
I'm opposed for it, just like they said. I mean, I don't want to look my back, just blameous term. I don't want to look at my backyard and...
And I believe you're the one who's considered, and talking about, are you gonna buy the property regardless?
Um, no, this is a big decision. This is probably gonna...
You have an active purchase yet?
Not yet, but this is, yeah, this weighs in on it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, one acre to the north of this house he's wanting to buy?
I don't know.
Is that how it works out?
Is it, is this the one acre?
The one acre is...
To the north of the house? That would be a parcel E three forty-three, Jim?
Somebody's getting a deep thought of their speaker over here, how many of us people?
I can see, I'm on, it's owned by Glenda Smith. Is that, I mean, no, I'm sorry. It's the one, you, I can't read the parcel number on here.
Nobody goes anything, so you...
I'm sorry. It's, this one.
Yeah, okay.
That's the one.
You got a better picture than I do.
All right, well, I'm the...
What are you gonna do, Jared?
Well, we're gonna split here then.
Well, we can't do anything, do we?
Table's here.
All right, make a motion.
Josh, you want to speak?
Well, I was just wanting to add that as far as the easements are concerned, it's a, my, well, you know that it's, my grandpa is the one that's, he had a, trying to take care of him. And we was wanting to move to Florence to begin with, and the original agreement, like she had actually mentioned earlier, we was gonna, was thinking about buying the house. But when we went to go get the mortgage loan, they had told us that we actually make too much money to be able to get the loan, which to me, honestly, didn't make any sense, but... So we ended up having to wait for another two years to, for our taxes to do that situation in order to be able to have, to have it correct, to be able to get the loan for the house. And then when we did get all that in order, that's when we found out that there was somebody trying to buy the house. Cause the original thing was, is when we bought the house, which is three, I think it was 3.7 acres, that's in front of that acre, we was gonna buy that. And then grandpa was just gonna, pretty much just put that acre in there with it. And it was just all gonna be on family land, and we was all gonna live in that area, you know? And, well, obviously, that didn't work out. So we're trying to see if we can be able to somehow find a way to be able to get us in that, on that one acre. And if the house comes up for sale, you know, or if there doesn't fall through with what's going on with them, we're still able to get the house. But we don't want to go get a mortgage to try to build a house or do a double wide trailer until we find out whether or not we can either get the house in front of it or not. Cause it's kind of like we got enough to get one mortgage a month. So we're trying to figure out if we can buy the house, we'd rather do that, but they still got process going on about that, so we can't, just trying to think ahead enough to be able to say, okay, well, if that does happen and we can't end up getting the house cause the, they end up buying it, then we'll still be able to take care of grandpa and, you know, on that one acre land together. And like you said, as the thing we, when he, if when he does passes away, then we would, we would get rid of the trailer to, you know, pretty much the trailer's there so that way we're not all together in one house, you know what I'm saying? And that's pretty much just long enough until he, you know, passes away or, you know, till he either fully recovers one or the other, you know? And then, uh...
Was that your sister who's done all this, or your wife? Who, who started the process?
Uh, my, my mother started the process. My mother's actually the one that's taking care of him at the moment.
I don't think she made that statement the other day. She sounded like the trailer was gonna stay, her mobile home was gonna stay firm.
Well, she's also a little wishy-washy sometimes.
This is being recorded.
Oh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have... Well, I was being honest.
All right. I think we've heard just about all of it.
Oh, yeah, we got it, no.
All right, we have a motion.
I guess, well, until we know something, they can't do that. I'm going by what they're telling me.
Your, your motion would just be to table this matter, Jared. We will revisit it, and, and the purpose for tabling it, Steve, is so that we can obtain a clarified situ, position as it relates to the access easement. We really can't address any of the other concerns? Sir?
Almost like two. I mean, the wastewater as well as the...
Yes, sir.
driveway.
Yeah. With, with the wastewater easement, assuming that that has, that, that, that has been reduced to writing, I don't know that it has or has not.
Right.
But that would, that would rectify any potential health department issues, cause I think they can address the wastewater treatment using that wastewater easement. The, the access easement is, is the big deal. If they can't get access to the property, then we don't need to address the conditional use.
Right.
Okay? So the instruction would be to the Chambley family, you, you have to clarify and get some sort of writing, some sort of intent document of some kind, from the individual from whom they need access. This driveway access, that needs to be presented back to Renee's office before we can proceed.
That needs to what, 30 feet wide?
Well, we, I believe, during our meeting with, with the Chambley family, where we were just looking at, what, what are we talking about here? Tim mentioned trying to get enough footage to accommodate not just the driveway itself, but also...
Utility.
Utility easement. And so I think, Tim, we said, you need to get 30 feet. That was our recommendation. Get 30 feet.
If he knew what the minimum was, he needed to get, you know?
That's what, that's, that was my question.
That's our recommendation, is that they get 30 feet.
Jared, we've had a couple nuisance properties where they've abandoned homes in terrible shape, and we were looking at the lot value may not, they may not could sell it for as much as what it'd cost to clean up.
Right.
Is that a long way away from where he's talking about? I mean, they may could expand their compound and, and buy something like that.
Yeah, a good bit, ones, a good bit further north.
Okay.
All right.
So, Jared, is that your motion is to table this?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we can really do anything at this point. And so, and it, yeah, so we just table it.
Yes.
My motion to table it.
Jared makes motion to table the issue, and we'll wait to see what the...
Well, we really can't do anything.
Well, until we get in, get more documentation to look at it, or do we have a second?
Second.
Bob makes a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed to table this issue.
Yeah, so that matter is tabled until October the 15th.
October 15th.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm putting it on the record for the pur, for purposes of the people who are here, so that no additional notice is required. The representative of the Chambley family is on notice that we will revisit this issue on the 15th, which means that the issue of the access easement has to be clarified prior to the 15th. In enough time for Renee's office to look at it and for me to look at it to be satisfied that, that that could in fact happen, okay? So October the 15th will be the target date.
And if we know prior to that, then it would die before it ever got here.
Sir.
And we knew prior to that, that it was not gonna happen, then really it would just be...
Yes, sir, there would be no, there would be no need to pull it off the table.
Right, we wouldn't have to act on it then.
Yeah, it would just, it will just die for not having been brought back.
Okay.
But we're, we're clarifying that October the 15th is the next opportunity for this to come off the table.
Okay, good.
All right.
Josh? All right. Thank you all for coming.
Item F, Mr. President, if we're prepared to move forward, is a public hearing on the Amy Hines conditional use permit at 354 Rankin Roads, District Four property. Ms. Hines is seeking a conditional use permit to place a 20, a 2019 14 by 60 manufactured home as a second dwelling on her property at 354 Rankin Road. This home is for her sister who is disabled and will require assistance for the rest of her life. Ms. Hines owns the 7.33 acre parcel, it's owned A two. And so we will open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Amy Hines conditional use permit request. Is there anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. At this time, we'll close the public hearing. It'll be appropriate to take action.
All right. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve it. This is a seven plus acre tract. They're bringing in a new manufactured home. It's for someone who's disabled. I think that this statute, or what we're doing here fits this very well, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this.
So?
No rental? Yeah, no rental, it, it will not be used in the future for a rental property.
Okay, so we will clarify that your motion is to establish that condition, which is that there shall be no rental of this particular unit that we're giving a conditional use permit to at any point for any purposes ever. It's for the purposes of the sister.
Right, we're stepping out from the zone and, and saying, yes, you can do this because she's family and she's disabled.
Yes.
So I think it's only fair that we can put that label, that it also will not be...
That's correct.
Snuck in here and rental.
We'll paper that up. If at any point in time it, it is no longer necessary for use by the sister for purposes of her care, then the unit has to leave. That'll be clarified as a condition. Okay?
I, I think that's fair. If that, or when that happens, Ms. Hines could come in here and, and tell us what our other plan may be, if something happens to her sister, maybe a son or a daughter or whatever, and then we'd reconsider that.
Okay.
For the time, I think it's...
We, we would say then that upon the sister vacating, no longer needing it, that at that point in time, it will be at the option of the board as to whether or not it is to stay or to go.
Yeah. Thank you. Oh, well, I made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item G is with respect to our District Five election commissioner position. Mississippi Code, Section 2315 213 requires that candidates who are filling an unexpired term must submit a qualifying petition that has been executed by the requisite number of qualified electors. Your circuit clerk received a petition of your District Five election commissioner candidate, and we are simply acknowledging receipt of that and that that particular petition meets all of the requirements of 2315 213.
All right, Bob makes a motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item H is, it's a situation that involves the Evergreen Pumper Truck that was struck by lightning, lightning and damaged. We submitted an insurance claim to VFIS. They have paid that claim. Those funds were tendered to Rankin County in the amount of $6,891 and one cent. The vehicle was in fact repaired, and the amount of the repair is $6,891 and one cent. And so you are simply authorizing the use of the insurance funds to pay the repair bill for the truck. It's a net zero wash to the county, but it's, it's a situation where we didn't have an, a purchase order that was, that was issued because it was being repaired at the behest of the insurance company. So we're just basically fixing the documents so that those things make sense to the auditor when the auditor looks at them next year.
So moved.
All right, Jay makes a motion. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Y'all are gonna think I'm nuts, but I, I have absolutely no clue why I asked for item I to be on there. Yeah, I know, I know, but I don't remember why we needed to talk about it, so...
Is it needed to be replaced?
Yes, that's correct. And it, and it, yes, okay.
We know the wrong?
That's, that's correct. No, okay, now, now I'm clued back in. All right, thank you, Ms. Janus, for helping me to get my act in order here. Out at Pilate Lake, the, back in the 1990s, Rankin County, which at the time controlled Pilate Lake, the campground area out there, entered into an agreement with our friends at the National Forest Service and the Department of the Interior to establish and to build and to build a few structures out at that campground. That was a county obligation, and it is not assignable or transferable to any third party. It is a perpetual obligation of Rankin County forever and always. Congratulations.
How many structures are we proud owners of then?
I think two or three. It's a little bathroom area, Jay, a little shower bathroom complex that's there and it's for the campground.
Can you just tell us what we need? We're getting...
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to be doing some maintenance.
Yeah, so actually, it's, it's not as bad as it sounds. It is actually well maintained.
Yeah.
And, and so, the, the only report we got back from a recent National Wildlife Service inspection of the facilities is your sign needs to be replaced. That's the only obligation that we have here. And so I asked Johnny to look into the issue of what would it cost. So we have a sign that meets the federal requirements that we can put up, and we just need you guys to authorize the installation of a replacement sign on the bathrooms out at the lake.
Jay Bishop Memorial Bathroom.
Yeah, that's new with that, man. It's first I've even heard of. All years.
Well, the big picture is this.
Can we name buildings after elected officials? I got a few names I'd like to nominate there at that bathroom.
But Gage Facility.
Yeah.
I didn't even, I didn't even know about it. I mean, I didn't, I wasn't aware.
You bought it, Bishop, didn't you? Were you on the board? Were y'all on the board where y'all bought it?
No.
No, Bishop?
This would predate anybody here. This goes back to the early nineties.
He made you know.
Mm-hmm, it goes back to the early nineties.
Jay Bishop Memorial Bathroom.
I had to be the Swales bathroom over there.
Oh, that's right, there you go.
Jay, I think you were here.
We got to search, we got to search those minutes. We got to find these minutes.
Pillatchee Lake was a big deal for Mickey and Judy back then.
Yeah.
We did our best to serve our citizens and our activities so just like y'all did today with y'all's.
Oh, my gosh, hand on the microphone, ain't close enough to you.
I got all my attention there, it's like y'all come here.
I appraised the lake for the county when it sold.
Is it?
As part of that project.
I can tell you this, I went there a few times since the spring, and it is nice.
Yes.
And it is being used. I mean, those weekends, golly, it's, people don't realize what that is out there.
Right.
It's, it's pretty grand.
We had a fire out there.
Let's just be thankful we had.
Three or four years ago, didn't one of the cabins burn?
Yeah.
Several cabins burned three or four years ago.
I'll take the bathroom.
Anyhow, what, what do we need to do?
You, you just need to authorize the, the securing, payment for, and placement of the appropriate sign as dictated to you by your federal overlords.
All right.
That's so mean.
All right, Bob makes a motion. I second it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
He just had to find something out there just by his inspection.
I'm putting Bishop's name on that bathroom.
I had a, I had a professor in law school who referred to this as the federal bludgeon, where it is dictated to you what you shall do at your own cost. And so that's where we find ourselves here. All right, so item J is discussion of and potential action regarding the Almond Realty lease agreement for the tax, for the tax collector's Flowood office. Ms. Judy's here, and so if she has, sees need to participate, please feel free. Back in May, on May the fifteenth of two thousand nineteen, the board approved entering into an amended rental agreement with Almond Realty that also included the expansion of the tax collector's satellite office in Flowood from its current square footage of sixteen hundred square feet, adding an additional twelve hundred square feet. At that time, the board acted to approve entering into the lease, and, but it did so with a condition, and that condition is that the, there would be completion of the construction of the additional footage before the actual rent obligation was payable. All right? And so at the time that you, that you considered taking this action, the plan was for our own work crews to conduct the construction and the renovation work. We, at, we, we entered into a lengthy conversation. Johnny Jones was involved in the conversation. I think Ms. Judy may have talked to Johnny about exactly how we're going to do this and what it needs to look like. So there was a lot of discussion about our own folks doing this. What we discovered was that the project is, is going to get us in trouble because of the bid law. The actual cost of renovation was likely to put us in a position where we would have to use this as a bid project. And I don't think anybody up there wanted to get into a bid project situation on this. And so we hit the timeout button, and we said, we need to revisit how we're going to do this, which then kicked over into let's go back and talk to Pete Almond about him taking the responsibility for doing the reconstruction work and the renovation work, and then we'll come back and revisit the issue of the lease agreement. What nobody was thinking about is the length of time that it has taken, and we've had, Pete has had some health issues. In fact, when I talked to him on last Friday, he was actually in the hospital. And so, so here's where we are. They have essentially locked down the extra space for the county and said, this needs to be the county's expanded office operations. They have not attempted to relet the extra twelve hundred feet to any, any other parties out of wanting to preserve that because we've already said clearly, we need the space, okay? So they're holding the space, but they're not being paid for the space. That's where we are. And we still don't have a renovation plan at the moment because Pete has been in the hospital for the better part of two weeks, and I have not been able to meet with him to talk about how are we going to renovate it and what's the cost going to be and what's the lease going to look like after the fact. So you guys are not in a position to make a decision on that. They are not in a position to do the renovation work at the moment, and so we're trying to buy some time here and get some feedback from you guys. We cannot pay for the additional space until you guys say that we can pay for it. And where we're positioned right now in the minutes is, we're not paying for it until the construction work is done. So we're in a no man's land.
Nowhere we need to leave it.
Well, the, the, the issue is this, they have provided the space, and they're not providing it to anyone, to anyone else, and the position that we're putting them in is, apparently we're, from their, their perspective would be, if we're not going to have a deal, if we're not going to get paid for locking the space down, then I'm going to make it available to anybody else.
Wait, the last time I spoke to him, I thought they were moving forward and getting on with work.
I think he's been in the hospital since then.
No, he said they were...
Tell me that they were going to start removing that firewall, so that part is being done.
It has been done, or they...
It is being, I don't, I haven't checked off.
The request, I, I, I am simply, I, I am being now the one who is giving you guys a message. The message, the request from the landlord is, please start paying us for this space since we're locked, since we locked it down, since we're going to do the renovation, please start paying us.
Do we agree? They got to have a contract. I mean, I know he's had some health problems, but until he hands us a contract that we can look at.
We have it, I don't know if they presented a number to us on the rent for them doing the construction work either, have they? They got to do that before we can...
We don't have details on that.
Before we can approve a contract to pay them.
When was the last time this came up? Two weeks ago? Is that when it was?
We discussed it two weeks.
It was actually the third.
He called me like the day before that, and we, because I, Laura had said we'd already, they'd raised our rent, you know, and we had just misread some stuff, so I asked him about it. He said, no, we hadn't raised it. Then we started talking about the next building, and he said, I'm not even going to start billing y'all till you get moved in. So I don't think, that was only two weeks ago.
My suggestion was the rent we agreed to last time was an as-is-where-is lease, right? We were going to do the work. So that rent amount is what we agreed to, you know, and as long as the space stays in that condition, we can go ahead and make the motion to execute and do it with the stipulation that once they finish the construction, they got to submit back a plan to us of what they're going to try to charge. And then without us, we don't know it. I mean, we don't know what that number is, we can't approve that part of it.
Let me, let me clarify what we agreed to back on the fifteenth of May. You, you approved a lease, okay, that has been signed, that has a rental amount of thirty-six hundred dollars per month beginning August the first. That, there was a period of time from June to August one, from June one to August one, really from May fifteen to August one, there was a period of time that was essentially that both parties understood to be about a seventy to seventy-five day period where renovation work could be done, right? And it was going to be done at the county's cost using county work crews. So we had seventy-five days to get all of our renovation done so that as of August one, we would be at thirty-six hundred moving forward. Is everybody clear? That's where we are document-wise. On the fifteenth, you were wise enough to say, we don't go to thirty-six hundred unless the construction is complete. Okay?
But is that really fair?
Yeah, nobody was thinking at that moment of time, nobody was thinking that we would tell Johnny, never mind. Nobody was thinking, we'll go back to Pete and let Pete do the renovation and then come back and revisit the issue. None of that was discussed on May the fifteenth. So where we, where we stand today is, your staff, your county administrator cannot write a check for the thirty-six hundred because the condition that you set has not been met.
So is he not wanting to do the work until we give him approval or something?
No, sir, I didn't hear that at all. I think that the X factor in all of this is that the fellow that needs to be kind of overseeing the renovation work is laid up in the hospital.
What's the answer? I mean, what's the best solution?
Our question is, can, can Johnny do it the way we thought?
For under fifty thousand dollars?
For the, the part that we want, when y'all went out and looked at it, so I said, he didn't have to take out the whole firewall, he'd just do a, what do you call it?
Case open.
Case opening, and yet, well, you don't, you don't spend as much money. Well, that puts us underneath the bid laws, we don't have to, if we do just a case opening, looking at the quotes they provided.
I think that, I saw where Pete had provided some numbers.
Yeah. I understand if you want to let Johnny go ahead and do it, if it's under the bid law of fifty?
I don't think so. I don't want to bring that in-house now because honestly, Pete gave his price, and I think, you know, he needs to do it within that price, he just needs to get to work.
He can get somebody, he doesn't have to be standing there. He doesn't stand there when everything else is done.
This guy knows what we want.
Yeah.
But he's working on the wall right now.
Well, I don't know why they can't just move on then.
What do we need to do?
Well, see, they got to put in a drop ceiling, they got to put air in, they got to do a lot of work. So, I mean, I don't want to just start paying him without him getting to work. They could drag us out for another two months.
Really, I've been dragging it out.
What if, what if we, what if we, well, if they're cutting the firewall open, they sure not going to do anything else with the space unless they plan to put the firewall back in place and market it to somebody. Has it opened up, the firewall?
Don't know.
No, because that's just separating her office from the next place.
I mean, he's kind of shot himself in the foot here if he's already taken the fire, because then he can't really rent it to anybody else because then he got to put the wall back up.
You said you thought they were starting.
I mean...
Well, then this, can, can we authorize the, the payment of the October rent and then revisit this in the end of October, see where we are?
Yes, sir.
And stop the payment from November?
Absolutely. You can condition your payment.
Let's do that. That way, he can get started. Because aren't you going to have to close that office now?
He said that they could do the final fixing of it over a long weekend or something.
So they're going to tear a firewall out while they're working?
No, they could call it over.
I, I know that's what I'm saying, I don't think they can. I don't believe.
If I may, let, just so that the record is really clear and the minutes are clear as to what you're doing, we're technically, we are about forty-five days late on an August payment, but understand that you condition, August one was the date that the new lease term was initiated at thirty-six hundred a month, conditioned on construction being complete, which has not happened. So I want it to be clear on the record, if you authorize the payment, the thirty-six hundred dollar payment, understand they've already been paid eighteen hundred dollars because that's the space Ms. Judy's already in.
Right, we need to just pay the difference.
Thank you. So we need to pay, I think we need to pay the August rent of eight, additional August rent of eighteen hundred dollars, and we need to pay the September rent, which by the way, I'm pretty confident we've already paid the eighteen hundred, right? So you'll be paying an additional eighteen hundred dollars. So you're going to pay a total of thirty-six hundred dollars for August and September. And then we will revisit this issue at the first October meeting as to whether any additional rent will be provided until such time as the renovation work is complete.
I don't want to do that. It's simply because Pete told me that he was fine, not, let's not pay until we get in there, you know? I mean, I'm good for us getting started, but they need to get to work. I don't know why they haven't been working the last two or three weeks, because we already told them we ain't going to do it.
We really never have approved his numbers. We've already talked about it, but we've never approved it because he never has presented back to us what that new rent's going to be as a result of him doing the improvements.
Yeah, until the third. I think Ms. Judy brought in the documents. I, I remember receiving documents that Pete put together, they're handwritten documents that laid out the actual renovation cost, his estimate of the renovation cost, and I think it was a sketch maybe of that. We got that on the third. It was shortly after that that Pete had a pretty serious health issue and had to be hospitalized.
You say the third of September?
Yes, sir, that's correct. So if I'm hearing, Jay, let me see if I can compose this. What I said about picking up the balance of August and September, forget that. Jay, I think what you're saying is, pay them the thirty-six hundred dollars beginning October one.
Right.
But we will look at October, the first October meeting, we will look to see, have they started renovation work at a level that justifies us moving forward?
I'd like to be seventy-five percent.
All right, so what I think we need to do is, we need to, we need to go back, y'all need to authorize me to telegraph back to them, y'all are going to make a decision either on October the third or October the seventh.
Yep. Well, the kicker is, the new lease amount we agreed to was an as-is-where-is space, and that's pretty much where it is today. That space is as-is-where-is. Nothing else has been done to it. So what we agreed to at thirty-six hundred was us doing all the work.
That's correct.
So that's a fair representation to pay them for that space even though we're not utilizing it yet, and we had done what we thought we were supposed to do. Now, in theory, Pete's going to change that, and he needs to get it done by October thirtieth so we can get to the newer lease amount that he's going to charge us, taking into consideration the amount of work he had to do, correct?
Yes. You would be authorized...
Yes.
It's going to get really confusing. I hope you're not taking a whole bunch of notes over there. You would be authorized to do what I said originally, which is to go ahead and authorize your staff to back pay for, for August and September.
Right.
The eighteen hundred that we shorted them.
Right.
Because we in fact have the space locked down under a lease agreement.
If he just said that to begin with, we're going to issue your break fees, man. I make that motion.
Wait a minute. So we're, so now we're backing up, we're going to pay them up to date.
We're going to catch up August and September, both of which we paid half of.
Which would be eighteen hundred.
Yes, sir. And you need to tell me what we're going to do beginning in October now that we figured out where we are and that we really need a renovated space and that he's had at least since September the third, some sort of notice that says, you renovate the space? Now I need some direction on what do we tell him from October one forward.
He's got a solid two weeks between now and October third to make significant progress in getting that space ready.
Okay.
And they can make significant...
So for the record, Bob's motion is to pay the balance of August and September, that's a total of thirty-six hundred dollars, and sit tight and get...
Not do anything else.
Not do anything else, go back and make sure that Pete understands renovation needs to be underway in earnest.
Right.
And we will revisit the question at the first October meeting.
A strong re-suggestion.
What about that?
Put that in writing.
Yes.
Hand deliver it to the office, even give it to Ethel.
Where you on, where you on that one, Jay?
He didn't care.
I'm just one voice. Y'all move on.
Well, say what your voice said.
I've already told you, man, I don't want to pay him till October, so...
He didn't say nothing. He said, he, he said we weren't going to pay him anything till we got...
He said he wasn't going to start billing us until he got it ready. So I don't know what the issue is.
He's not ready.
No, until he said, until he got it ready.
Our first contract said they wouldn't build until...
I'm not talking about the contract, Judy, I'm talking about the conversation I had with him two weeks ago prior to our meeting. And, and I guess I misunderstood, I thought we approved it contingent on you signing the paperwork.
Yes, sir, that's exactly what you did.
So I don't know why we haven't been moving forward already the last two weeks and getting construction done. That's why I was saying, let's just wait until October then.
Let me ask this. October's two weeks from now. Why can't we have some communication with him and table this until October? I mean, one side is saying, saying let's not, let's don't pay. And I understand Bob looking at the legal, I mean.
We just pay what we owe. We owe the eighteen hundred for August, September, correct?
We owe him that regardless.
Don't we? We, we signed the lease. We signed the lease.
If we've got a lease.
We signed the lease for August, August one.
I mean, do we not owe for August?
Yeah, so the position that I take in legal perspective is that you do owe it because he has not marketed this property to anyone else. He locked it down on the, on the good faith that you guys were entering into a lease. That would begin August one. Here's the issue. You were very clear when you said as long as the space had been renovated. And that was complete. So, you have a defense to a claim for payment, which is this space has not been renovated. Now, what would he say? Exactly. What would he say? Well, y'all were supposed to renovate it. Y'all were in complete control of that. And that would be true because we took, basically what we did was we said, you know what? If we do this, it's not gonna be cost effective for us. We would prefer that you renovate it. Alright, so we're in a no man's land as to who wins that argument ultimately. Frankly, I think Pete's got a good argument that we should pay him for the space.
Well, we could, we could always, in a sense, say, oh, we're tables, right? Until October, make sure some, some significant work's being done. And then we can always come back, but I want to know that work's being done.
So, I, I think maybe. And I, again.
But we're not paying him for the work to be done. We agreed to his work that we were gonna do that.
I just need to wait. I just need to wait till. Let's see if something actually happens.
Hey, what was your motion then, Bob? Just to pay August and September?
August, September, pay the eighteen, thirty-six hundred dollars.
That we owe anyway.
Current.
And then nothing else.
Happy. And that's what, cause we owe them the money. That's all I'm asking you to do.
If it, if it drags on, nothing's gonna get done.
Yeah, so by paying the thirty-six hundred, by paying the thirty-six hundred which catches up August, September, it gives me an open door of opportunity to explain there shall be no additional rent except for the eighteen hundred under the original obligation until the renovation is complete. So, please don't put us in a position where come October one, we're still waiting on renovations. So, you got two weeks. That was, that's the point that I'm trying to make here is a good faith showing. Here is Au- August and September for the additional space. Don't get after it and get the renovation done so that come October one, we're paying you the thirty-six hundred.
But Jay, he told you he wasn't gonna charge, start billing anything until after the renovation.
It doesn't matter.
I think that there's fault on both sides and I don't know why we couldn't negotiate with him and ask him would he settle for half nine hundred. Because we're both probably at fault in some areas. And, and Pete is, he's reachable. I have a feeling he would say, you know, probably say a few cuss words and then say, yes, I'll, yeah, I'll do that. I mean, I know it's, we're, we're talking about thirty-six hundred, cut it in half. We'd be talking about eighteen hundred.
I still make, I make the blasted mission to pay him for August and September. Second it for me, Daniel.
We have a motion by Bob to pay.
The renovation.
Have a second by Daniel. Is there any other discussion? Now discuss it. We have a motion and a, and a second. What, what would you say?
Nah, I just think, I was curious what brought this up. I think it's just simple fact that we hadn't followed through and got all the paperwork signed. Not the money, but.
Pete went, Pete went into the hospital and became unreachable.
The last two months payment?
No, I, I'm not aware if he has. I haven't heard.
Has he been requested the last two months payment?
Ethel. Brain's behind my operations.
Alright, we have a motion by Bob to pay the two months. Second by Daniel. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Alright, let's move on. Please get the thing signed so we can, uh.
It sounds like the firewall may have already been dealt with.
Nobody knows.
Separate her office, that new space.
Well, I don't, I don't like doing that, but I think it's cheaper than having. Yeah, filed on its end losing.
He ain't gonna file a lawsuit. He just wants to think signs, he can move on. That's all.
He's still not getting the whole thing what he wants. He wanted thirty-six hundred. You're gonna get half. He's gonna get half.
No, he's getting half of the new building. He's getting the other half already.
No, go back to May. You got, May fifteenth through. From May fifteenth though, he's been holding this for us. He hadn't rented it to anybody else since May fifteenth when he come to us. And we said, yeah, we want four months. Alright, let's, uh, move on to Ms. Wanda.
I'm, good morning. My, item A, um, re-reefing project for Department of Human Services. We're asking for approval of pay application number one to M and S Roofing Company in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. An authority to issue that check.
Alright, Daniel makes motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Should I even mention the ELC roof? Let's don't mention it. Perfect. So, we're getting close. We prayed for no rain, so we got in there. Just from right word, right word.
You saw where they're catching all up on the new courthouse, yeah? They've got all the brick up, got asphalt down, and they're, they're working on the floor.
They just need sunshine. Lord knows who got that.
Alright, let's move on.
Um, item B, on the new Rankin County courthouse facilities, approval of pay application number twenty-six to Chris Albretton Construction Company in the amount of five hundred and eight thousand, one dollar and eighty-seven cents. An authority to issue that check. The contractor has requested nine additional days due to adverse weather conditions. Architect has reviewed and in their opinion, the contractor is entitled to six additional days as specified in his contract.
Make a motion to approve without the additional days.
And have a motion by Bob approve without the additional days. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes without the days.
Thank you. Um, item C, we're requesting authority to transfer the two point eight million dollars received from the state of Mississippi per Senate Bill two thousand and two, section thirteen, for assistance with the Gunner Road Extension Project. We're asking to move this from the General County Fund and our general fund account to our fund three twenty and the bank account SB two thousand and two Gunner Road Extension as required by the Mississippi Department of Finance and Administration.
So, move. Jared makes motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item D, um, authority to accept certificate of substantial completion on the new Rankin County misdemeanor facility and authority for the president to sign that document.
So, move. Alright, Jared makes motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
And item E is our discussion of and potential action on the amount of reimbursement from the two thousand nineteen bond fund for our qualifying projects. And I have updated the spreadsheet a little bit, um, to reflect what was going through the claim socket today. So, some of those items have changed a little bit.
So, this is a D sheet?
This is a N.
What is this, more reimbursable stuff possible?
It's just a few additions to the line items for what was paid for September.
This kind of, this kind of ties in with Craig Slay, the traditional business for the buy-dash on the animal shelter that we're gonna talk about too. Mr. Slay, you wanna?
Oh, are we ready to start that?
Well, I mean, it kind of helps lead into some amount of reimbursement we might be looking at if we go ahead and.
Uh, quick summation. The board established a bond project. Uh, a, the construction of an animal facility that would include an adoption center, adoption facility that would be located on Market. On the county's property there along Market. Uh, some initial discussions just to take the temperature of the city and make sure we didn't have any issues with respect to location and kind of a, a proposed, very much a work in process elevation. And those discussions went well. Uh, no, no blowback that, that I could perceive anyway. And so, I don't, I don't see any issues there. The discussion then became, what's the most efficient way to get that facility out of the ground? The option that we used for Mike's new facility, the road maintenance facility, which is through what's called the certificate of participation process, uh, opened itself up for consideration. The idea being that what we saw there and what we would hope to duplicate is being able to build a facility that, uh, you know, would have cost under the typical design bid build approach, um, at a particular level and being able to bring that facility in at about eighty percent. Uh, you, hopefully in, in the neighborhood about eighty percent of what the actual, the typical process would be using the certificate of participation approach. If the board is amenable to exploring certificate of participation, we cannot use bond funds for the project. And so, what, what we need to discuss as it relates to that one particular project is do we move forward with a certificate of participation type of analysis? And allow those, what would have been bond proceeds to go back and move to a cops approach? Or if the board says, no, we don't want to do the cops, we won't bond money to be used for that, then we just make, need to make sure that we have that discussion. So, does that kind of get it?
And my take is that if, if you, if you look out of the standpoint, the million dollars in the bond has been allocated to the animal shelter and say, okay, we'll go the, the participation route. That takes that million. You could put it over here with the five hundred thousand for the reimbursable stuff. Now, you're up to a million and a half for reimbursable without impacting any other projects on the bond deal. That make sense?
You've already put five hundred thousand into your bond projects as reimbursing, uh, reimbursing the general fund for bond projects that were in process before you passed your bond, right? You already set half a million dollars aside.
From a lot of projects.
Y'all did that early, right?
Many projects.
So, what Bob is saying is if you don't use the million that you set aside for the animal shelter, you now have a million and a half that you can put towards reimbursement. That changes your whole discussion.
Without impacting any other projects. So, if you look at, if you look at what she's got on the list, you got two point eight million in reimbursable. You take that two point eight million and what Jared and I talked about last time was if you try to go to four two eight, you may potentially impact some other projects out there. You just don't know yet until we get to into the project. But if we go ahead and do this, this way with, with the animal shelter, then we know at least we got one million dollars that's been freed up to put with the reimbursable side. And that gets us to start off at a million and a half. Now, all we gotta do is find maybe one point three more million somewhere else in all those projects or not. We can stay at one point and a half and then we're still getting that money back. But we are gonna create ourselves a lease obligation like we deal with, uh, the, the maintenance facility. You know, to do, and we can always pay it off, you know, a year or so down the road or two after it's built.
That's correct.
And we've worked with the sheriff and his people on creating a design and creating roughly about a ninety-five hundred square foot building, two thousand square feet of that being into the, uh, uh, rescue area and the other seventy-five hundred square feet being into the, to the office area as well as the kennels for the sheriff and his crew. So.
Ten thousand square feet?
That's what, pretty much what they're gonna need for.
Slightly less.
How many runs? Um, I'm sure there'll be some cages for like cats and things like that.
There's gonna be a cat and a dog.
How many runs? How many?
Right, he, we're working to a number that the sheriff, you know, and his people met with, with us. And then Jim Anderson, he's, he's phoning on the F, five oh one C part. It's sad, so I don't have one with me, but like forty-eight kennels, fifty or more? But we're trying to do a standard, you know.
How many runs do you have over there now?
How big is our current facility?
Have you seen the current facility?
Yeah, I have. But I, I don't think this adoption thing's gonna, I'm, I'm not.
Here's the key, here's the key.
And then we have to.
Well, here's the key, here's the key to the adoption thing, cause, cause the sheriff asked that question at the last meeting. You know, what happens if, if this doesn't work? And I said, well, can you use the two thousand square feet in front of this thing for other operation? He goes, oh, yeah. You know, it becomes yours.
Sure we can use it for something.
You know, but I said we give it a shot and see.
A million dollars for a dog panel though?
That's hard. That's hard to sell.
What's the heart about?
A million dollars for a dog panel?
I, you know, I believe the sheriff on, on more than one occasion has demonstrated his need for the facility. And, and the opportunity to say, does the board supervised want the operation back? Do y'all want to get back in the dog business and cat business?
I don't even want my own dogs. That's not true. I love my dogs. I'm, I'm gonna have to talk with Brian. I mean, I don't think it's something we have to do here this minute, but I'd like to sit down.
Yeah, but I'm not saying it has to be done today, but, but I'm gonna keep pushing it hard. Cause I'm not gonna let this thing, I know what, I know what the ultimate goal is here. Let's just push this thing on to the end of the year. Nice trial. I'm already on top of that.
You hear Mr. Swales over helping you out?
Let me put it to you like this. If it doesn't get built with the bond proceeds, it will never get built.
But you're talking about not using the bond proceeds.
Well, I'm just saying. Take dollar for dollar by reimbursement versus, you know. Put the million dollars back in the general fund through reimbursements and that takes, sensor takes care of that constructs the facility.
We just need to negotiate that million dollars. That's way too much money for a dog panel though. I mean.
For, for about a ninety-five hundred square foot based on what? Plan that Harrison had and the, and the building they built for like seventy-five dollars a foot. And you do the math. By the time you get down to it, you're looking at eight hundred thousand for the building.
I agree with the, the, the cost would be there, but do we need that bigger facility? Yeah, ninety-five hundred's gonna run you there. I think that's what Jay's saying. Maybe we don't have to have quite, we don't have to have ninety-five hundred. I, I think that's what he's getting at.
The proposed
Maybe less money.
Square footage is a work product that also involved your animal control folks who know what the situation is with respect to the animal population that we're dealing with now. And so, they are telling us that for now and into the future, you have got to have the adequate space to deal with pets. And you're, you're looking at being able to house a hundred.
You have to realize that the damage hasn't been the same size for twenty, thirty years.
How big is it though?
The jails, everything else grown, I mean, the population's grown, the number of animals have grown. And that's my number. I catch more flack over animal control than anything else, cause all these different people have these different ideas of how animals should be taken care of. Well, for me to hold animals longer, you know, we'll try to adopt that all we can. But for holding longer, I need more room to hold them. I need a, I need a cleaner, warmer facility. I'm telling you, I catch all kinds of flack. Animal control's my number one complaint.
Well, you know, we saw, I don't think there's no end to how big you get, cause all of our hearts go out for animals, you know? But we saw that lady out there on Holly Bush, man. That, that just went crazy. There is not big enough facility I don't think we can build to take care of all of them.
We are no kill shit. We send ice, we're risky. We will kill any animals and euthanize any animal. But you know, if we both be made, everybody need to be added all these, mad at all these irresponsible owners. I saw, I, I dare anybody to look anywhere in the state, find a county that's doing more for animals than Rankin County.
I was gonna say, e- even if we build a facility where we can double the amount of animals we can keep, we're still gonna have the same problem. We're just gonna have a bigger problem.
Well, I don't, I think.
Cows, horses, pigs, goats, name it, whichever.
Our facility, if you hadn't been down there, is very outdated. It's not, almost not functioning. I mean, it's, it does not represent Rankin County.
I agree that it's outdated.
But I don't think, I mean, I, I agree with you, Jay, but I do think that we should do something.
Sheriff came up with a number on the square, help him with, on the, and his people on the square foot and the size of the kennels. And, uh, I'm not saying it was inflated. You're right. We can cut it back in half and do a five thousand square foot. But at the end of the day, you're still being, you're not giving him enough space to do what he has to do.
You can fill it up to.
I don't think the adoption thing's gonna last a year, you know? On our shoulders to take care of them.
No, that's, that, that's not true unless the sheriff decides to go that route. And I told him, I said, in the event the five oh one C does not work, when that, that relationship does not work, then he'll have full access to the.
Yeah, but then we gonna put it on him to have to do away with it, you know? That ain't right either, you know?
No, you won't put it on you. You'll be gone.
If they quit putting people down there, then we're gonna be faced with having to staff it.
Well, Jay, we, we are having an adoption program through the sheriff's office. Has nothing to do with anybody else, just through the sheriff's office. We'll keep ours going regardless of what happens. We're gonna keep adopting out animals.